Good morning, everyone. Time now being seven o'clock P M. The school was not called or ordered. In session, I see that we do have a warm speak move forward with the discussion of the Gird School District basis. Everybody have to look over the agenda. If I have any questions about the agenda. And we had to look over the financial report that we see. Anyone have any questions about the financial report? And we had opportunity to review the previous four minutes. Any question about the previous four minutes? What the respective tabs, can I get a motion for consent? To accept the agenda, the financial report in the previous four minutes?
I make a motion to approve the agenda, financial report in previous four minutes.
So you have motion to set up another question. All the families who vote say a poll of use the same sign. Approved. Okay, the next thing we have is superintendent's report.
Yes, I just wanted to give you an update tonight, just some back to school information. And I handed that to you as your opinion. You should have a copy. Our enrollment as of today is a total of six hundred and forty-one students plus forty-two in pre-K. And we're down about ten students from where we left it in May. We were at six fifty-one in May. And most of those are due to moves out of the district. We have had some more coming in and enrolling. And so in the next ten days, it'll fluctuate. Usually have some move out or request, or have some move in. So next month's report should be a better indicator of where we are to start the year. And we have thirty-one in the Arch Board program right now, either the Believe Academy or the HAB. And five more conferences scheduled this week, which still puts us a little bit under where we were last year. And we're on our in my side enrollment from last year by about forty or fifty, about fifty kids at my side. And on the COVID summary, I want to point out on here, all of these are prior to the start of school. The numbers I've given you. And these are ones who have notified us that we've been have been reported. And any students that are listed right now with current positive case or currently quarantined. Those have not yet come on campus. So that was at from school transmission. They just contacted us and let us know that they were in quarantine or they have an active case. And they'll return after their isolation or quarantine ends. We are expecting several of those back over the next few days. And I did note that at the bottom of that summary. And also, I did want to point out that seven staff members since July have been exempt from quarantine in the past month due to vaccinations. Since they're vaccinated, they did not have to. So that's already been a benefit for us on not having quarantine back. And I'm not going to go through all of the other updates, but Mr. Mel did submit some updates, just in the different areas that he can read through. If you have any questions, certainly ask me, but just some general information about where we stand in some of these areas that he is over starting the year. And then next month, we'll start having building reports again, once we have school up and going. And I have some things I will not share with you. And then I also included a copy of the quarantine requirements that do note. The first question we have to ask is, we're both the infected student or staff member and the probable contact wearing a mask. If the answer is yes, then, you know, we're looking at symptoms to run or have quarantine or not. If no, does that have quarantine? No question. So it's just a good flow chart, just if people start asking you, community, if they've been quarantined or not. This, this is what we're using to make just decisions. Department of Health.
Do you serve a certain documentation, you know, the whole business of this work model office system?
Is quarantine?
How people report that and like what would you?
It's the honor system at this point. And if A D H knows of one, they usually let us know, or people self-report. Yes. Any other questions regarding that? Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce April Shepherd. And she is our C T E coordinator and has with Dawson Education Cooperative. And she wanted to share with you, there are a lot of questions last year about our C T E programs and certifications and things we're doing. And we have some really neat information that I didn't even know until she was sharing. So she's put together a presentation just to share with you and some of our own employee, current employees that we have grown here in-house. So I'm going to turn things over to her at this time, and she's going to share some information with you about that program.
Thank you for having me. What I've done is I use a research tool at Dawson, and it's called Jobs EQ. It allows me to go in and pull data based on labor market information and several other statistics we'll look at in just a few minutes. So what I did was I went into that research tool and I pulled data specifically for Garden and specifically for Clark County, because I wanted you all to see what is available as far as jobs for this area. And then what are some other things that are tied in that are very important to make your students successful? To go out and find these jobs and become a employer. So if you'll look here, this is the data that I pulled from the report. And it's Perkins Five, which I'll explain in just a few minutes what Perkins Five is. But this is the data that it forecast the career clusters as to which there's sixteen career clusters. But these show you the employment areas, what's available in all the different sixteen career clusters. But if you will look at the numbers, education and training, it's showing to have a hundred and forty openings in that area for Garden, which not openings, but just employment, those people that are employed within that particular area. And then if you'll go down to one hundred and nineteen, there's that many that's employed in manufacturer, which that makes sense with Georgia Pacific. You know, down the road a little bit. You go on and then you start looking, breaking it down. We've got seventy-seven in hospitality and tourism. So that would be like food services. Those are jobs that are associated with that. And then you look at business management administration, that's all clerks, secretaries, office personnel. So what we do is when I run, I do this for every school in Dawson and Co-op. And there are many in our Perkins Consortium. So I run this data every year and then I meet with the teachers, I meet with the administrators. And we look at it to see what's going to be effective for the school. What does the school need to be offering in order to prepare students for jobs? So in looking at that, what that tells me is you guys are right on track because you have the education and training program of study. And people are going through it. They're getting certified, and I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Manufacturing, you're preparing students in manufacturing their ad. You know, he does an excellent job in giving those skills for Georgia Pacific that's going to help the measurements that they need and add his power structures program study. So I pulled that data just specifically for Garden, but I wanted to dive a little bit deeper and look at Clark County as a whole. Because some of our people, you know, they go outside of this particular area and they work in Arkadelphia or maybe the Amity area. So when I looked at Clark County and I pulled that data, we're looking here at occupation based on job ads that were posted. We're looking at occupations that are available in this area. And I apologize, I should have blown that up a little bit bigger. But you've got heavy and tractor trailer truck drivers, registered nurses, retail salespersons, first line supervisors, food preparation, serving workers, fast food counter workers, first line supervisors, driver sales worker, order filler stalkers, customer service representative. And this was effective as of yesterday that I pulled these job postings that are on different resources. So go a little bit further and let's look at the employers. We've got the names of the jobs, but where are these people hiring? So this is a list of some of the people that are hiring in these different areas. And it tells us how many people, you know, what are the ads, the thirty-eight at Baptist Health. So it breaks it down for us as to where, and it goes a little bit further. Certificates, what are the certificates these students are going to need in order to have these jobs? So if you look like a driver's license, if you're going to be a C D L, if you're going to be a truck driver, and R N, if you're going to work in the medical profession, CPR, you know, cardiac and heart support certification, pediatric advance. So that it breaks it down and it tells us what type of certificates are going to be needed for this job. Another thing about the State Department is that for every program of study, they require certification in these particular areas. And if you're going to receive Perkins money, it's a must that they have certification in order to have a approved program of study. So some of these you guys are already doing. You're meeting the needs that Clark County says these students must have to become employed. You know, you're giving your CPR certification, you're giving your, now here's his child development associate. You're going a step further. You're giving the parapro, the Praxis parapro, and having students that are passing it. And you guys are even employing people in these fields. That's huge. That's very big because that's a big test, hard test pass. Costs fifty-five dollars and you guys are knocking it out of the park because every student that has been tested has passed the assessment. So you guys are preparing students for this field. We look at the skills, what skills are needed to have these jobs that are available? We have hard skills and we have soft skills. The hard skill that these students will need, cash handling, working in cash register, health and wellness, no CPR, no lifting, but food service, teaching, training within a school, no Microsoft Office. In your business program, Mr. Orsman is given Microsoft Office certifications at no cost to the school district. Students are certifying in Word, Excel, PowerPoint, Access. Those are jobs that our employers say they must have in order to be hired for these jobs. Your students are getting those. They got them last year and I've got the record to prove that. So these are the number of ads for these different certifications that most students must have, soft skill. And I've been into your teacher's classroom every year. I try to go in and meet with all the teachers twice, once in the fall, once in the spring. How are things going? What can we as Dawson do to help you guys? What type of resources do you need in order to be productive? So if you'll look the communications skill, no customer service, have great verbal and written communication skills, be a team player, be cooperative, have organization, do problem solving. You see these across the board in every job, in every C T E area. Your teachers are doing this. When I go into the room and I'm not an administrator, I'm not there to do anything on the administration level. I'm there to assist and help. That's what we do at Dawson. We help schools. So when I'm going in, I'm looking at Kobe's ad class, what do you need? How are things going? What about your project based learning? What are y'all doing? He tells me, I ask the kids, they can tell me. That's a good thing because kids will leave Garden, go into these jobs, they have these skills, so they're ready to go. Going one more step further, you look at the programs. These are what programs need to be offered in a school district based on the need in Clark County and Garden. We've got nursing, psychology, special ed, education. Y'all have education. Business management, you offer your business program of study, which is accounting. If you go down to the next lesson, you see accounting. So you guys are offering what you need in order to meet the demand that's in this particular area. Another thing this will do is go statewide. So if you even want to go one step farther besides the garden in Clark County, if you want to go statewide, we can pull the same data. So that's when I'll come in and I'll work with machine, I'll work with Mr. Val and say, okay, what do we need? What do you guys want to look at? You know, how, let's talk about your C T E programs. Where do you want to go with this? So you all are definitely on track. Perkins Five in July two thousand eighteen, it used to be Perkins Four, but July eighteenth, President Trump signed into action Perkins Five. So they appropriated one point three billion dollars to assist students and adults in career and technical education. Your school gets Perkins dollars. And it's based on the number of students that you have in a poverty income, based on the number of students you have in the district. It's a formula. So based on that formula, your district gets a certain amount of money. That's where I come into play because based on the funding that you guys get, you joined Dawson as a group with other schools. And then we work, what do you need? So when I come around every year, I'm looking, what is your needs assessment? What do you need to help? Do you need P D? Do you need resources? Do you need equipment? What are some projects you're doing in your school? Do you have the resources to implement, implement, make it successful? So that's what Perkins Five is, and that's what you guys do. I was talking about the sixteen career clusters, and I'm going to briefly skip over this. But you have main career clusters on the inside, and then on the outside, you break it down to the sixteen. You all have human services. You've got education and training, and you have human services. So you have two of the four in this area. You guys also have business management and administration. But you have the finance, you've got the accounting part up here, like Kobe offers in I agron, you've got your power structures, and you also have your animal science. But just talking to you, what I've been talking to him, you know, how's animal science going? Do you have a lot of people enrolled in that? Let's look at your data. Does your data match that? Okay, maybe we've got some hypothetical situations that students coming in, maybe they want plant science. Maybe they want to grow things, have a greenhouse. So we would look at that, administrators would look at that, we would talk, okay, do we want to write for plant science to get approval and possibly get a grant to help with that? So that would be my job to come in and look and see, you know, what do we need to meet your needs? When you receive Perkins funding, you have to meet indicators that are set by the federal government. These are the indicators that are set by the federal government. Four-year graduation rate, extended graduation rate, academic proficiency in reading, math, and science. That's your A C T aspire test. Post-program placement, and then you look down in program quality. These are your student certifications that you're having. So the state looks at these indicators and then they look at your concentrators. A concentrator is defined as someone who has completed two required courses within a program of study. And then they take those concentrators and they look at the A C T aspire scores of those concentrators. And then you, as a district, have to meet, and it's broken down by year, have to meet the target. So this is just to break down the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Garden's done excellent here. Okay, you've met it. And especially with COVID, we changed some of the requirements because of COVID, but you guys are meeting your targets. So that tells me your C T E teachers are doing what they need as far as reading, writing, science in C T E. They're doing what they need to meet the performance levels that the state has set for us. So we're going a little bit further. Three things that the state says we must have. It's got to be a clearly defined sequence of courses. Start at the foundation level, add to it the next year. By the third year, they have the skills they need, they have everything in place to go into the workforce and be productive and actually get a job. Second thing, collaboration between secondary, post-secondary, and community entities. There is a requirement for C T E teachers, they must have two advisory meetings per year with their business and industry. You guys have those meetings. Dawson also does a big meeting with regional people. So I bring in people from maybe Little, maybe Alver, maybe Arkadelphia, maybe Garden. And I brought in people from Forests. And we meet with everybody, we talk with business and industry. What do you need? We want you to hire our people. What are some skills that you need? Will you come and be a guest speaker in my classroom and tell us what you need? Will you let our students come and job shadow you? So we've had those discussions with your teachers and with your students. And, you know, we can also work on my end with Dawson. I can get a stop and if you wanted to teach your externships, where we put teachers into a business and they get to work for two weeks and get a stop in, and then go back into the classroom in this, in this, where school starts and understand what those jobs entail and what they need to be teaching to do those jobs. We do those as well. So we do several things that help. Last thing, connect secondary to post-secondary, which leads to a stackable entrance. That's simply industry certifications. The state says we must have certifications and they must be stackable. I've already explained that. You guys are doing it, doing an awesome job of that. So you're meeting that. In order to have money from Perkins, you must meet these three requirements, which you are. I'm briefly going to talk about this. It's going to spend a little bit more time, but these are your clusters here. And then it breaks it down to your pathway and your programs of study. So the three main ones here, that's what you guys are doing, like I agron, you've got your power structures and technical, you've got your animal systems. Under business and marketing, you have accounting, under family and consumer science, you have pre-educator and human services. So there are several options. The reason I show you this is because it's a continual basis. We're looking at labor market data. We're looking at, you know, this area, original area, maybe a statewide area. Where do they align? What can we do and meet that need and it be doable? And so you guys, like I said, education, you're knocking down the park with that. Human services, you're doing that as well. So go a little bit further. You all did a student survey. This is information from two thousand nineteen, twenty. And what it did, if you look here, it shows you, you surveyed, well, the colors will show you the gray. So here it's eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh. In two thousand twenty, it's ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. So you surveyed your students and based on the survey, I ranked them in order of interest, the career clusters. So you do this every year. And what we do is we come together and we look, okay, where do they align? You know, look, architecture and construction, architecture and construction. Okay, Kobe, you need to be teaching your classroom some of the standards that go along with that, that apply to your curriculum. You need to be teaching maybe electricity. You maybe need to be teaching measurement. You maybe need to be teaching how to work pipes, fit pipes together. So we're looking at the correlation in this. No finances here, finances here. So that's in the clock ten. Y'all off with finance. Go over here and look human services. That's A. Over here, it's none. Okay, we can do that as well. So we look at this every year based on the student survey. What we need to do next year is go down to the fifth grade because we want it to be like a longevity type of thing. Where when we're offering these clusters, it's not changing every year. We're going forward and we're growing and we're working with business and industry. So we do that. And like I said, we've aligned where we can based on what we're offering here. And you're offering what's the end, the interest level where it is. This shows you that the state every year gives us program approvals. Why is this important? Because this is tied to your Perkins spending. If for some reason, you're not, you get under this status that you guys have all approved from last year. And this works on the year, like this is twenty twenty-one. So because you were approved in twenty twenty-one, I can spend the money for you on twenty-one, twenty-two. That's why it's very important for us to be approved every year. So y'all need something, I can get it for you at Dawson. What do you have to have in order to have these programs approved? An active student organization, F F A, S C L A, S B L A. And you have that. You have students that are participating and winning at the state level, going to nationals. And I'll show you that in just a few minutes. So you've got all of that. Are you offering courses in proper sequence? Because if you're not, you'll get deemed, they'll put you on a conditional status. You guys, like I said, are doing that. Are you offering certifications? Are students acquiring certifications? And you are doing that. So there's several things, and if you look right here, reason for conditional status. There's several things they look at when they come in and they see what you're doing. So this is last year, y'all are approved, we're good to go. In October, they'll look at you again. Are you approved? Which you will be. You're good to go for the following year. This is placement data. When completers graduate high school, the state requires us to locate those students and find out where are they? Are the completers hired in the area that they graduated with? So I'm going to use probably power structures. Okay, did John Smith graduate in power structures? Yes, he did. Okay, he's graduated. Now where is John Smith? That report's due in February. Let's say he's working down at G P. Okay. So they are in within his program of study. This is your data report from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty twenty-one. Well, we don't have this because it's a report that they were. But you will look how many students were placed in the areas that they completed. Some of these are doubled. Okay, they may be complete in business and they may be a completer in act. So that's why the numbers look kind of funny, but it's a great, that's, that's wonderful. You know, here you had seven, but look, you double, sometimes triple, quadruple your number. So you're doing a great thing in placing students where they need to be. This is completer status. I've just told you, a student that completes all three required courses, they are considered a completer. We have to turn that data in every year. Again, if you will look from two thousand fourteen to twenty, and COVID down here, that's going to affect your numbers because it's hard, it's really hard. But you guys are doing a good job. Again, here, you may have some that are double. That's why that number, and there may be a bigger student body. This is Ms. Rogers. She was a twenty twenty graduate at Garden High School. And I'm going to let her tell your story so you can hear how great C T E is at Garden.
Hey, everyone. My name is Jenina Rogers and I'm a former student G H F, class of twenty twenty. And I just want to talk to you guys about Ms. Williams and our C T E classes that transitioned my life into the work world. Ms. Williams classes are very body-centered. You have your food and nutrition, where we have proper food safety handling. We have proper food measurements, food storage and temperatures, and different utensils to use. And then we were able to be hands-on in the kitchen. We have our housing class, where you were able to do interior design, learn about taking care of your house, proper chemicals to use for cleaning, laundry and things like that. Then we have our child development and parenting. Child development, it was about the study of children and how their brains function and how fast that they progress. We were able to learn about different philosophers. And then in parenting, we raised a baby for a week. In her education classes, we shadowed a teacher and we were able to be very hands-on with the students at all times. And we gave our very first lesson plan where we had to create a different lesson plan for a different ability to students. We also were giving a parent professional test where a lot of those pads and became licensed parent professionals in the state of Arkansas. I am currently a substitute teacher that I have done for a year, and I'm also a manager of a store. So being in practice of what I've done in Ms. Williams classes really helped me transition because I have lots of experience and the proper certification that I needed. Because of Ms. Williams and her classes, I am now able to get better paying jobs. I have very good knowledge of all my jobs and it helps me find jobs better and faster. Ms. Williams was very hardworking with us and she could stay late. Ms. Williams was very hardworking with us and she would stay late at all given time shifts to help us. So I'm very thankful for Ms. Williams and her CTE class.
Okay, so you can see she's got her parent pro.
Hey, everyone. My name is Jen-
Let me go down to the next one. We have another student, Matt Carey. He's a program of study that he completed with ag. He's talking about that. Before I play the video on Dawson, we had our very first educators' rising region five competition. And the schools that participated in this, Lakeside, Center Point, Hot Springs, Arkadelphia, Garden. So we had a lot of students participate. You guys had students that participated in this competition. They gave a speech about why they wanted to be a teacher. And Jake Davis, one second, which qualified them to go to nationals competition to do the speech with them. So you are doing wonderful things in your, um, student organization. So I'm going to let you hear from Matt.
High school Agroforever gave me a huge jump in preparedness for my just vocational. I'm currently on the school floor. Because I was actually able to get some hands-on, uh, time in the Agra programs. I'm studying industrial electricity. I was taking HVAC, which is, um, I wasn't able to do HVAC from high school Agra programs. But I was able to not only take electrical classes offered through the Agra programs, I was also able to do the electrical teams, which is a CTE judging competition. And it gave me a huge jump up for when I got to my vocational. Because I knew a lot of stuff and I was actually very well-prepared. So a lot of the guys I was in the class with didn't even know how to tell different lines of support, didn't know anything about it. And I'm over here answering questions on day one and they couldn't understand it. And it's because I had the background knowledge and everything, 58th, Agroforever, the high school, Tom, which helped me be a little more well-prepared.
Okay, so, um, you see that you guys have a great, uh, oh, pardon me. That you have, um, wonderful things that are happening at Dawson. Um, CTE, the State Department comes in to conduct technical assistance visits. And they're looking at your programs. They're going to offer suggestions on what you can do. Um, you guys, if you'll notice, they provided feedback and suggestions for the district personnel. And it's kind of like they will walk into the ag and say, okay, maybe update some of the equipment. Or if you've got equipment you're not using, maybe get rid of that equipment and let's look at what we need to purchase in order to update your equipment. So, um, you all had a great visit in two thousand seventeen eighteen. Also in two thousand seventeen eighteen, we wrote an innovation grant. You guys received, um, a forestry simulator, which simulated a filibuster and a loader. The students could go in and sit on these simulators. It would activate just like they were in the actual piece of equipment. They would go through a series of tests. They could test out, get a certification on it that said that they met proficiency on this type of equipment and they met safety regulations. The State Department came and visited. This was the director of Arkansas Department of Education Career and Technical Division. That's the director. So she and her team came and was able to sit in and actually use it. Was wild. Now I'm getting phone calls from other schools that are wanting to emulate this program and, um, are very excited about it. So you guys have done some great things and have even set the bar high for other schools that are wanting to come in and copy what you're doing here at Garden. Um, another thing, we wrote a program of study for accounting. And, uh, you all were approved for that program of study. So you started the new accounting program of study because of that survey that we conducted. It said that students were interested in that. And then we also wrote for the orientation to teaching based on that survey's need showing that you have students interested. And as you heard from Ms. Rogers, you all are growing your own year because you're hiring these students that have met the qualifications, have the certification, and can come in and actually work in the Garden School District. Um, these are the, the required courses. The state sets up courses at level one, level two, level three. So a school is required to offer the courses in succession. And then if you want to have an apprenticeship or career faculty where they would go to work at these places, you can set that up as well. But see, they give you certifications, the state does, telling you that you have to have these certifications with this program of study. So it's kind of limited onto what you can and what you cannot do. You guys were awarded a fifteen, almost sixteen thousand dollar grant to start this program of study, which allowed you all to buy your basic minimum equipment to do this effectively. And, um, you're using that in the classroom now. Perkins on my side, when I come in and do your needs assessment for your school district, if I'm seeing that you need equipment that is outdated or old, then we use the Perkins money that comes into the consortia to purchase these items. These are just some of the items that we've purchased over the years for you all. Every year we purchase software, which we've done G-Metrics for you guys, ICEB, for you guys to help with online curriculum through COVID. So those would be your software supplemental. Industry certification, I've mentioned that. When a school comes in, like you all are paying your expenses upfront for, let's say CPR, and it, it may show that you've got that expense. But what happens is Ms. She might would give me a copy of every student's name that took the assessment and pass, a copy of their certification showing that they have it. And then she's going to give me the school check and invoice showing that she paid out of the district. I in turn will run that through bookkeeping at Dawson and then send your district the same amount of money for the certification. So that is a reimbursement that we do to every district that's part of the consortia. It's to reimburse them so that they're not out that money. And then professional development. Um, if you have your teachers that want to go to professional development to better their program, we pay for their lodging, we pay for their mileage, we pay for their meals, and we pay for their registration fee. So that is not an expense you have as a district for those teachers. Another thing you guys do here, it's, um, it's called NCRC. You used to offer the class called College Career Readiness and you're going to do that again next year. That will allow the students to take a curriculum and they will test at the end of that curriculum for this NCRC. They will test in three areas, applied math, graphic literacy, workplace documents. And there's four different, um, awards they can get or certifications they can get. The first one is bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. These are some of the jobs that will go with each one of us. So as they score higher, you know, you'll see like engineers would be part of your platinum. But there are, because of this, and you all are part of the ACT work-ready community. And because you are a part of that, you have access, and they've taken this test, you have access to businesses that will hire these students with this certification before they would hire someone off the street that does not have it. Um, Lockheed Martin and Camden is an example. I can tell you just off the top of my head, that's a requirement. Anybody that comes in must have a silver. So if you have a student that takes this this year, gets a silver, and if they want to go to work there, they can. Like if I was applying and somebody else that had it, that had a silver, they would get the jump over me because they had that certification. There are businesses in Clark County that has signed on to this. And we're almost at our goals that we set for us as Clark County because we decided to be a part of this. I worked with you all, Jeremy, specifically to come in and get you all set up with the business to be a part of this so that your students, after they finish and receive the certification, they can go to these places of employment. And, um, here are the people in Arkadelphia and surrounding county area that, um, have this. There are eight hundred sixty-seven employers in Arkansas that will hire students with this certification. I'm not going to click it if y'all want to. I'll send this presentation to you if y'all share it with everybody. You can see the employers around the state that will hire students with this certification. These are your certification numbers. And if you will look, um, you know, and I've started two thousand sixteen because that's when the state started requiring it. But you started with one student education parent pro that you've added to it every year. So this is for this year. You'll see you've got many more certifications. Your numbers are high. Some of these, like, um, Mr. Leggett does a great job. Pro, loggers, the equality assurance, those are free certifications that are recognized by the state. Some of these costs like parent pro, um, your CPR, which again Dawson comes in and we help with that expense so you're not out of anything. Um, a survey was done with the community to see about your CTE program satisfaction survey. And these are just some of the comments that people in the community said. Garden High School's training productive workers for future careers. GHS prepares tomorrow's workforce today. Garden helps students on a team college to develop a lifelong skill or trade. So I say that to say this one more time. You guys are doing an amazing job at Garden High School. And if there's anything that I can help you all with, or if they give a like from Dawson, or that I can do, please reach out to me. Here's my cell phone number, my office phone, and my email. I'll be glad to help anyway. Thank you. For sharing, that's good data. And I'll get that, I'll email that presentation out to you all.
Thank you very much. The next thing I, Jen, is, uh, anyone have any question that relates those, why they receive five percent or more towards their salary? Any questions? If not, could I get a motion to approve it?
Like a motion.
It's like, the motion is, uh, for the question, on both sides. Approve at the same time. Okay. The next thing is, your school-based mental health contract for the upcoming year. EFS and AJAP. Anyone have an opportunity to review that? Yeah, have any questions if y'all want to discuss this thing? No questions? Motion, please.
I make the motion, we accept.
Yeah, motion accepted. Question on babies goes at, uh, approve at the same time. Okay, next thing is, is the kids' therapy contract for speech services for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year. Anyone have any questions about that?
But the guys think several of these look kind of similar. All these type of low-play, uh, contracts that y'all know there every year.
Well, the mental health are, yeah, the mental health are very, just the same as last year. They, that's just a grant that they're coming up with, so it's here on campus for their students.
The best customer here, here, it's the same groups.
Yes, but some of the others may vary. You know, Ms. Gentry, like on this beach, she'll text, see who can provide what we need. You know, if we need onsite services or if we need teleservices, she'll check into that and find the contract that will provide what we need for the certain number of students we needed for each year. So that may vary year to year, um, on these therapy contracts. But the mental health, right now, we've got the two pretty stable groups that have worked consistently with our students. That hasn't changed at all.
Any question about the kids' source?
Is the kid's source just to pick out what we have, the number of students that we have over our contract?
Yes, over what our, our on-staff person can hold. They can only hold so many students or holders. So this is just to take care of those few students that are over that. Rather than us hiring another full-time person, we just contract just for those few students.
Make a motion, we accept the kids' source therapy contract. Big services.
So we are motioning, so we're starting, you can hold on. Approve at the same time. The next thing is, additional to the approval of the budget. Some changes on page fifty-one. We have to look over the, the whole budget with the little adjustment that came in. You have any questions about this? I have no questions. We need a little more time. You have any questions to present this time?
One question I might come up with is, uh, we've got a couple of vague balances. What, what, what would be starting all of this, who, who here with balances in the bag? And one of them is, uh, title two A and title four A.
Oh, those are, um, we transfer those ones out. And so you should have an entry up the top that says transfer in to title one. So what happened was, say, and I'll just use an easy number, like a thousand dollars. If the state allows us a thousand dollars in title two A, we can actually take that money out and move it instead and add the thousand into title one. It's permissible in title two and title four only. And the reason why we tend to do it that way is because we can pool all of that money into title one and actually have enough to, like, cover an employee's salary or something like that as opposed to having it where, you know, we're only going to be able to do this bunch with title one and then this little fraction with title two and this bunch with title four.
So, uh, but at the end of the year, it should bounce out.
Right, and then, yes, sir, exactly. So that, so that's the idea that we have to say, we have to, we have to legally record that we are transferring them out of those and then moving it into title one.
And you can see that right here, second line, forty-seven thousand, it says, transferred into title one.
Yes.
That's the combination of those two we sit down there.
Not, kind of, the motion, please.
Like a motion to accept, uh, change available.
I have a motion, a second, for the question on both sides. Approve at the same time. The next on that is the, uh, the state no assurance of the ESEA. Does that guy have any questions that relates to the, uh, statement of assurance?
Make a motion, we'll prove the statement of assurance.
So, we have a motion, a second, for the first, on both sides. Approve at the same time. All right. The next is the, uh, the ESE, Statement of Assurance.
I make a motion, I'm trying to get the twenty-one, twenty-two statement of assurance.
So, we have a motion accepted for the question on family's votes, I, a poll is the same thing. Approved. The next thing is, the uh. Okay. On a G, the correction, that should be twenty-one, twenty-two. For the curriculum updates. Let me make sure we understand, we're, we're talking about the twenty-one, twenty-two curriculum updates. I was just. And I'm looking at you, so what we're saying is, we're, we're going to make sure we meet those standards. As I was looking through what I made contact, and on the website of this, to do a little work. Because I know, we just put out there, we're just, we're going to meet their standards, and I want to go and see what those standards were. And I was looking at some of them, I just want to make sure I'm asking the district. I looked at some of them, we're saying that we can meet those standards.
Yes, and we were fully accredited for this last year.
Well, I mean, I looked, that's okay to me. And it makes you, it makes you, it makes you.
When you say we were accredited last year, maybe it's the same.
Yes, we, we are full accreditation house. That's all working out in the night, I believe, Jeremy, is that correct?
Yeah, the state board, for this.
They give us some dates in that, please. So if there's any white little red flags, they alert us and we can start checking and making corrections and getting everything in order.
How, how do they all, like, I'm going to do like that, do so?
No, they, they check through submissions to their website, things that we have on our website that we're supposed to, they have checklist, they, they do it remotely.
Now, in all fairness, they can do that.
Yes.
And, and if they get to that point, that's, they, they do the, they do the online checks first, like everything that we submit. Like, for example, in the, in the financial side, in E-Finance, or in the academic side, in East School Plus, or whatever, they check those first. Then they go back and they check our, our specific reports that we've submitted, like cycle and things like that. And then they can do, they can do a video conference call with you if they need additional information. And then they can actually come out onsite. And used to, they only had the onsite and they would come out and do that like every three years. And like in the Shepherd's presentation, she referenced the, the November two thousand and seventeen visit that the state came and did. And since that time, they've switched over with their constantly checking things throughout the year digitally. So that way we don't, so we're not waiting until thirty-five years later to find out, oops, we're doing that.
You know, front question, they said your curriculum updates.
Say that.
We have a motion accepted for the question on family's votes, I, a poll is the same thing. I'm going to pause right here. Think of, we need some information, and make sure we get information before we move forward here.
Yes, each year at the end of our closeout, which is, you're approaching between now and the next morning. We have to have a legal balance that is pretty close to what it was the previous year. If you're way over, that they feel like you're not spending enough of your money, if you're under, then it starts triggering fiscal distress, operating balance. And the past few years, we have transferred from building fund to operating to keep that legal balance where it needed to be. But this year, because of a few things, because of the bond reissue, we saved. We saved three hundred thousand dollars on the bond this year because we had the initial savings. So our payment was only one hundred and twenty-three thousand instead of four hundred and fourteen thousand, which it will go back up to this year. We also were able to use those funds to pay for some substitutes for COVID leave. And we had some state, if they're open, also to pay for some of the teacher sick days instead of our operating. Because of that, we actually have a surplus in operating this year that we need to move to building fund to save for future use. So we need to move four hundred and ninety thousand dollars from operating to our building fund, which will get it back up to about where it was four years ago. Before money was transferred over to keep that legal balance. That's the recommendation, we'll do that.
We have a recommendation to transfer four hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the building fund.
Is questions for any other options for that, or is that just for that recommendation?
That's, that's what we need to do. Ms. Burrow even called our person at the state administrators association, Ron King. And they talked to you, they recommended that's where we, what we do with that. But we, that'll still leave us with a legal ending balance around six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in our operating. And we're usually around that six fifty. But that is what we're about, do you have any other comments?
Well, just like, you know, maybe, well, we could use that money to reservice bed or playoffs some of it.
Well, don't know that you can pay your bond off early, like you can, be able. This will put the funding in the building fund, and that way, if there's a year where we're not, where we've spent more and our legal balance is dropping below, we can transfer it back out of this building fund, back into operating to keep above that legal balance.
Yeah, and we had in sixteen, seventeen, we had six hundred and twelve thousand, almost six hundred and thirteen in building fund. Over the past three years, with transfers out, it's dropped to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. So this will kind of help put it back to where it was a few years ago and have a good healthy budget there. Also, there are mortgages, it's something we have to pay for that we weren't expecting. We can transfer that per building to operate and take care of that expense as well.
I just, they spend it on the budgets when you don't, you know, like, spend it or lose it type scenario, that's.
Well, this, we're not losing, we're getting the savings, we don't need it. We just can't hold it in operating, if we hold it in operating, then we're not spending.
Questions?
I made a motion to approve transfer funds from operating fund to the building fund, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
We have a motion accepted for the question on family's votes, I, a poll is the same thing. Approved. The next thing is, what they said, I just had a quick question. Why are we putting the sign on Third Street? That's what's in the quote. The old, we put the sign, the old football field.
Do you know why they?
We don't own that property, we didn't change that address.
I bet they used the administrative address from the website when they did the quote. But it's, it's for VHS, it's going out here.
I didn't want me to have that clarification though. I don't want me having to sign on Third, you know, on the property anymore.
Actually, the whole sign will say they will replace the digital case.
I just want to make sure we, we had that direction though. And it's not going to three, fourteen, Third Street. Okay, because I see insurance going to pay for it.
Yes, it'll be a regular.
For the question, can I get a motion to, of saying?
I make a motion, approve the quote for what you signed, something, replace the GHS, message, sign.
The motion accepted for the question on family's votes, I, a poll is the same thing. The next thing is, the bus purchase. All right, we got a whole lot of information here, several times over. Even by spec, over, are we looking at purchasing?
And we're wanting to get five of the seventy-one passenger route buses, and then one new seventy-seven passenger trip bus. And then the trip bus we have, that's seven more passengers will be completed.
So this is what we paid for next one?
ARPS, or no, we're still waiting for approval, but I didn't want to get that approval next week. And I just have to wait until September to place the order. If y'all go ahead and approve this now, as soon as we get that approval back, we can place the order and get it live.
Hold on, I got a question before you say my question. I was trying to figure out, my own saying, why are we looking at going from a seventy-one passenger trip bus to a seventy, for seventy-six, seventy-seven passenger trip bus?
Yeah, we can just get down more, there's more students typically that go on trips. Maybe get more than maybe on a route bus, and just space them out more on that bus.
I was looking at what we had, what we purchased, and I looked at the cost, I'm always going to look at the cost.
We have one seventy-seven passenger already, correct, Dustin? One of them is already a seventy-seven.
Our current number twenty-two bus is a seventy-seven passenger bus. It has proved to be a huge asset, and especially now social distancing, with the amount of room it has. It has the spacing to allow for our football players, they're here, and most of, you know, most of the time they're size. So considering when we are talking trip bus, it is commonplace now for a seventy, seventy-seven passenger bus to be ordered for such.
So what's the possibility, so I want to make sure we cover this one time, what's the possibility that extra? Bravo, because I'm looking here, and we're looking also, if we can get this six buses, or in another bus, correct?
If we can make sure we have a driver, Dustin's not positive right now that we would need that, other ones are still out of route.
We're, we're discussing the six or seven option. The, the seven option is, is there is no guarantee in a driver for that seven bus right now in our situation. And it is, with this extra money, we don't want to get in a position to where we do use the extra money on a bus that we don't have a driver for. It doesn't need to be set on the yard. It, it needs to go for, and that's, that's just something we can't guarantee at this moment.
Okay, we'll be looking, I'm okay with buying one. I mean, this is a lot more to do, I would push this. We have any further questions relates to this? And we're looking at going with this.
I got, I got a question, in this way, that's, what, is this your recommendation for two gas burner buses versus, or is that just happenstance?
It is my recommendation that we move towards gasoline-powered route buses in the future. You can ask any transportation director in the state about their problems in diesel exhaust fluid killing transportation departments. The route buses just do not facilitate the use of diesel exhaust fluid. In the fact that they're stop and go, the buses never have a chance to regenerate. So they never have a chance to go into regen. And the, the biggest problem, right now, we've got one of our newest buses within the shop right now, we're waiting on parts to repair, step system in the bus, because they said over the summer, it has crystallized with heat and usage.
Sure, I mean, wouldn't it make correct, maybe we'd have this split block, maybe more gas burner buses versus less, less diesel?
It will benefit as a district as a whole in the future. If I did understand you there, correct, at that point, you were looking.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, you, what, what was the thought process?
Yeah, from going traditionally from the diesel to the gasoline.
No questions?
So we're both approved, boss.
Six buses.
Say that.
The motion to approve five trip buses and one, I mean, five, or a route bus, one trip bus. Second, for the question on family's votes, I, a poll is the same thing. I just overlooked one thing because I, we asked, was that his recommendation? That's when I went with the bus, that they were recommending. Yeah, seven bus, but he said it was his recommendation, I realized, in the report, he was in recommendation. When he asked, that's why I just invited anybody that had any questions. All right. Next thing, one of these. No person there, no person there. But I do have other, I really want to thank the school board, them, because you put a lot of time in this one. And it is very rare that we have three meetings in one month. I do want to thank you, and I do want to thank you for the work that you're doing, I think, because this is a rare month. And we got somebody new coming in, we don't want to overwhelm them, we just want to say thank you. And I thank y'all. That's all I have.